The candidates include incumbent school board member David Weaver, and instructional professor of managerial accounting at Pittsburgh State University. Lori Musser, a former teacher, counselor, and principal at Joplin Schools, recently retired from MSSU as an academic success coach and coordinator of disability services. Then we have Derek Gander, a former two-term school board member elected in 2017 and 2020, and the owner of Premier Home Inspections in Joplin. And Thomas Ross, the business owner and former City of Joplin employee. Our forum will begin with each candidate having one minute to introduce themselves and tell us why they want to serve on the Joplin School Board. Then, they will each be asked six questions, prepared with input from local teachers, MSSU teacher education staff, and Project State coordinators. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer. We will work our way down the line of candidates, giving each a chance to be the first to answer a question. After candidates have answered the prepared questions, we will open the forum to questions from our guests here in the council chambers, if time permits. Questions can be directed to all candidates or to an individual candidate, but once answered, other candidates can offer an answer to the question posed by our audience. Now it is time for you all to tell us about yourselves and why you want to serve on the Joplin School Board. We begin with David Weaver.
Good evening. My name is David Weaver, and I'm happy to be here tonight. Appreciate the invite. We, I have served in a variety of roles in Joplin, longtime owner of Weaver Photography, longtime with Quanania Christian Campus Ministry out at Missouri Southern State University, and then also an accounting and finance instructional professor at Pittsburgh State University. I lived in the Joplin School District for a little over 40 years with my wife. We've been married 38 years. My wife Lori and I, we have four children, two grandchildren. And I want to serve on the school board, I believe, because it makes a difference in the lives of children. It impacts economic development and workforce development in Joplin. And I remember seeing those kindergartners come into class the first day, the excitement, the anxiety, and it seems like no time. And they're graduating, and they're sitting out in audience with 550 students with their caps and gown on. And you think, how did that go by so quick? My son will graduate in this graduating class at Joplin High School. My oldest granddaughter will start preschool. They live in the Joplin School District in the fall. So I've got a lot at stake, and I love the children. I love our teachers. I love what they do for Joplin and developing and making this a great place to live. So excited to see it second term.
Thank you, David. Now Lori Musser.
All right. Thank you so very much. So first of all, I just want to say I love my community and I'm willing to serve in this capacity. Not everyone is, and I wanted to take just a minute to commend all the candidates that you see up here, that they are willing to serve and sacrifice time from their families. So thank you guys for that. So as I was mentioned in my introduction, I have 38 years' experience in education. So that passion kind of guides me in what I want to do as far as on the school board. First, first of all, I want to make sure that all students receive the best education that they can, that we, that can be provided. And then also to support teachers and staff, making sure that they have all of the resources, the support, everything that they need to be able to do that job. And then also to allow parents to have that voice, so they can share their input, share feedback, make comments or ideas, and be able to listen to them and share that voice with others on the board. And just do the best that I can for the kids of Joplin.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Derek Gander.
My name's Derek Gander. My wife Ken and I have two children in the district, Briggs and Bailey. Briggs will be a senior next year, and Bailey will be entering high school next year, so I'm kind of excited for that. I'm running for the board. I think there's changes that need to be made. We're going to see some things, some shortcomings, with different financial. I, I think there's some, we're losing some money, or there's the possibility of losing some money. So I want to get back in there. My first two terms, we were fiscally responsible, or, you know, and transparent in things like that, and I served, Lori, with you. I think we did great things. We overcame COVID. I was fortunate to be able to help write the reentry plan, so I'm looking forward to getting back in there and digging in and seeing what we need to do to educate these kids.
Thank you, Mr. Gander. Thomas Ross.
I'm Thomas Ross. I really have been just hearing different things from different people, both educators and parents alike, that things are not what they used to be nearly 20 years ago, 20 years ago when I was in school. I've got two kids of my own. One is three. She's going to be entering the school system very soon. I'd rather get things solved and fixed before she gets in there. I serve as a vice president in a local nonprofit. And so me and this community, I just want to do nothing but serve and help fix things locally. So that is why I'm running, and I'm trying to help make things better for our future and our children's future.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. We will go to our first question. A priority of the district is teacher retention. MSSU has a teacher education program. What are some selling points for those majors to choose this school district for student teaching and/or employment? And let's begin with Lori Musser.
Okay, thank you. Well, that's definitely a crisis and a hot topic throughout, I think, the whole country and all districts is recruiting teachers and then retaining them afterwards. So the first thing that I think we need to do is we need to create those high-quality work environments where teachers will feel like they can be successful. They need to feel supported and make sure that they have all the resources and training that they need in order to carry out their jobs and to be able to do it the way they see fit. You know, they're the experts, and I think sometimes we need to get out of their way and let them do their jobs. We also need to make them feel like they are supported in other ways. Those, you know, the home life balance, being able to be there for their own children's activities, and make sure that, you know, we provide them that time that they need for that. Sometimes we accept, expect them to be there for everyone else's children, but we don't always give them the time for their own. You know, just to be there for them, and then also make them feel, what's the word I want to use? Make them feel appreciated and valued. Sometimes it's not always the paycheck. It's not always the one that, the district that pays the highest amount of money. Sometimes it's the culture of the building, of the school district. So I think that's very important. We need to make sure that we're creating that positive culture for not only teachers, but students and parents as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Musser. Derek Gander.
Just from some of the phone calls, I think Joplin does a pretty good job. I think we've done well. Of course, I, I don't think there's anybody up here that would say we don't want to pay our teachers more. I think the teachers need to feel respected. They need the resources. I don't think a teacher should spend a dime of their own money to educate our kids. And the biggest thing, and I've taken several phone calls and text messages, is the teachers need to be walk, be able to walk into their building and not feel like they're not being heard. There are several teachers that are afraid to say anything because they're afraid of repercussions, and that's disgusting within our district. And that, I've, five or six different text messages and then two phone calls just this week. So I think we've got to support our teachers better. At the end of the day, if they're not happy, our kids are not going to be educated to the best of, you know, to their fullest. So I think, you know, teacher paying benefits, Joplin's done well with giving bonuses for doing different training. I think that's great, but the teachers have to feel respected, period.
Thomas Ross.
Teacher recruitment and retention, it's not really always a financial issue. Most of the times that I've been talked to and called about has been walking on eggshells, such as was just stated. They feel like they have to mind their Ps and Qs, and albeit that is the case, but they aren't allowed to do what they're meant to do. We need to release the shackles from our educators and let them do what they do best and teach our children. At the end of the day, whenever they go into the classroom and someone throws a tantrum, they shouldn't have to remove every other child, as well as themselves, from the room and let that child go through and break things that belong to them. Many times, our educators have objects in the room that are valuable or that they have purchased with their own money. And when it is broken, they don't get reimbursed by the local schools. I think that it intrudes and impedes their ability to teach the majority of the children just to cater to the one child throwing a tantrum in the room instead of disciplining the child in the room.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next question. Our David Weaver.
Yeah, I think teacher retention is important, and, you know, while a lot of people feel like it's about the salaries, it's about more than that. It's about, do we feel valued and respected? I think support is another big thing for our teachers when there are discipline issues in the buildings, and we're seeing that particularly in our country at the earlier grades. And so how do we support teachers with the discipline in their classroom? When we have a student that's unruly, we need to remove that student from the class and enable our teachers to teach. I think appreciation in little, in big ways, to be valued, to listen to them and to be a voice for them. When I have phone calls from teachers about concerns, we take action. And I'm in the superintendent's office talking about that and being a voice for our teachers and backing them. I think when you look at students, student teachers in our area, at our area colleges, those numbers are dwindling. It's not a profession that people are flocking to right now for whatever the reasons are. And so, you know, it used to be you might have 200 people at Teacher Day. Now you have 40. And so part of it is, is getting more people that would like to enter the profession of teaching and then helping them to feel valued and appreciated. Joplin Schools are the top four in salaries in southwest Missouri area. We're number one in benefits, and so we have a lot of great things to offer and a lot of reasons why teachers should want to come to Joplin Schools.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Our next question, besides retaining and recruiting teachers, we are told there is a shortage of substitute teachers, leading to requests for instructors to use their planning periods to cover other classes. We also understand special education teachers are stretched thin, often completing their paperwork for IEPs outside of contract hours. So what solutions would you offer to these problems? A, support more hiring in the special ed area, higher pay for substitute teachers? And teachers do say there was once a promise for board members to be more involved inside schools and at events. Would you yourself consider acting as a substitute or having a greater personal presence in the schools? So lots of options there. Let's begin with Derek Gander.
I'm glad you brought that up because my former tenure, that is one thing that I spoke to administration about, is spending a little more time in the classrooms to see what the teachers are actually going through. I know there had been talk about an hour or two, and for some of us, it's hard to take that time and do it. But I said, why not three classrooms in one hour, 20 minutes in each, and let's see some different things? You know, one, that's going to open up a line of communication between the board member and the teacher. I think, you know, once you, once you open up that line, they see that you want to be involved. I think it's easier for them to come and talk to us. Sped is a problem keeping those teachers. I think, and from some of the people that I've spoke to, that, that is hard to keep sped teachers. With me doing home inspections, I meet a lot of people coming in and out of the district. And every time I hear someone say, "I'm a sped teacher," it just, it makes me excited that they're coming, that they care that much about the students. I think the sped, they need support. I can't remember what it's called, and I'm sorry, PARAs or something like that. They need more time, or they need more help. And I think that's why we see so many leaving the district, because they are so overwhelmed with planning and doing things for each student. If we had, if they had more helpers, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the term, I think we would be able to retain some of those sped teachers longer, or, you know, longer term. So I think they need help. And again, I go back to, they need to feel respected.
Mr. Ross.
Yes, I'd go with the latter answer. I believe that, as I'm echoing here, it is important for the people on the board to feel more involved in understanding what is going on in the schools. So being involved, going in and helping when and where you can, I think is important. I do believe that our special education, special education districts and classes are doing a very good job, but they are overworked, and whenever you have to take your work home with you as an educator, it kind of burns you out. Burnout is a heavy factor when it comes to the retention, as the previous question was posed. This is just something that we can alleviate by just reaching out and lending a helping hand when we can. There is really no way to, better put it, than to help our educators feel as respected and helped and loved as possible. And by doing so, giving your time, I think is the best way of doing that.
And the options I gave are not necessarily that you had to choose one. Just you could comment on all of them. I mean, substitute pay or even substitute, the substitute problem, if you wanted to address that.
Fair enough.
So didn't feel like you had to choose.
You are just fine.
All right. So David Weaver.
Yeah, I think the, the attracting substitutes is difficult. We've raised pay. We've made it easier to get the certification where you can do that. All of those have changed. Special education, my wife is certified in several areas, so I have a unique understanding of the special education process, as she's been a special ed director and learned quite a bit in that area. Our challenge is that the special ed numbers are rising. Autism, once affected 1 in 120 people, now it's down to 1 in 40 and climbing. Behavior disorders are climbing, and oftentimes, a teacher will feel like if I've got a discipline problem, they need special ed, which isn't always the case. And so keeping caseloads balanced, asking teachers to come in in their planned time or combining classes when there's no substitutes available, these are challenges, and there's not great answers for them. And maybe the best answer is to make teaching a profession people would want to enter to where we have a larger variety to, to pull from. So with special ed, I think giving them, they're making sure they have their breaks, their planning times, their lunches, making sure they're valued and respected, not having to take work home and very much appreciated. And giving them support, particularly at those lower levels when behavior's become an issue, dealing with those. Early childhood's a big part of that. Took REX in behaviors early. It's a lot easier to deal with them early than it is once they're in fourth, fifth, or sixth grade.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Lori Musser.
Yes, so I'd like to address the substitute teacher issue. Just like teacher shortages, of course, we have substitute teacher shortages as well. And it does severely affect instruction, sometimes to have that different sub. Maybe a teacher is out for a week, maybe she's sick, and you might have a different substitute every single day. That's not good for kids. Some possible solutions to that is, and one thing that I considered when we, when I was a principal, is wouldn't it be nice to have like a permanent sub in my building? So hire a person just to be the substitute, you know, for my little elementary school, and they would be there to fill in wherever we needed them. Of course, they would know the building better. They would know the kids better. They would feel like they fit in better as a part of that staff. It would help with the culture of the building. The teachers would know them. And it would just, it would just be better all around. Plus, we do need to pay substitutes a living wage and maybe even consider giving them benefits, particularly if they're a permanent sub assigned to certain schools. So that's one solution that I think might work. We would have to figure out all the budgeting on that, but instead of calling in different subs every day, I think that would be a better solution for the kids and everyone else involved. Another aspect, we could bring in maybe some more volunteers. You know, you asked about subbing in the schools or being in the schools to help out. You know, I, I do help out some in my grandchildren's schools. I'm a proud grandmother of four Joplin School students, so I love being in their schools.
All right. No time on that one. Thank you. All right. You all, several of you mentioned behavior, so this question does deal with that. A December 2024 survey of teachers showed 48% say student behavior is a lot worse compared to pre-pandemic behavior. We have a graphic to show that. In 2023, it was a third, but it has worsened now to nearly half of all teachers, who say problems range from classroom disruptions to serious student fights, broadcast on social media quite often. Teachers reported a drop in students' motivation in the same time period. Student misbehavior is also hurting staff morale. That's documented in an EdWeek Research Center annual report showing just 18% of public school teachers are satisfied with their jobs. So what should the district do to work with teachers, students, and stakeholders to work through the rise in student behaviors and deal with student discipline and the lack of teacher respect from the students? And let's begin with Thomas Ross.
It's a very multifaceted answer. We have so many different avenues that you could pursue, such as removing cell phones from the schools. I mean, that is something that has become modernized and is in every child's pocket, constantly a distraction, and it always gets out there. I mean, they are looking for social media posts and attention dragging out left and right. Removing the cellphone will remove a distraction. All discipline, though, I believe, begins in the home and should be determined by the home. Parents need to be more involved, and I believe that that needs to be an open door policy, such as teachers maybe reach out consistently with the parents. We have parent-teacher conferences, but those are spread out so far, and they have so many parents to talk to in the lower elementary schools and whatnot. What they really need to do is just kind of bring the focus back to the home, bring the focus back to the education and the schoolwork. If the kids are focused with what they're learning and involved in what they're learning, they're more likely to stop with the distractions. Right now, we have so many constraints on what and how the teachers can educate the children, and it doesn't really allow their brains to develop new ways of thinking, new ways of moving forward. I can name off several teachers that helped me along the way by challenging not just how we think, but what we think along the way.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. David Weaver.
I think student behavior probably is the number one challenge that I'm hearing about, not just in Joplin Schools, but neighboring districts and even other states that I'm familiar with. I believe that this starts in the home. But today, more and more parents don't know how to be parents. So Parents as Teachers is a great program to get our parents introduced to learning how to be parents, training the kids. We have a big emphasis on early childhood programs, which are trying to help students and deal with some of those behavior issues and developmental issues earlier. Again, it's much less expensive to deal with them in the early childhood area than it is once they get through high school. I believe that we need to deal with it strongly. I think there's a heavy push on financing and average daily attendance, and that if we kick people out or send them home or suspend them, it hurts our attendance. My feeling is, if a student's misbehaving and causing the classroom disruption where the teacher can't teach, get them out of there. And if we need to send them home, let's do it, even if that hurts our daily attendance. We need to hold the principles on what's right and what will be tolerated and what won't. But we also need to work with parents to help them solve these issues at home and to teach good citizenship that these children learn early, dignity and respect, and how to behave at school.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Lori Musser.
Yes, you know, the, as David said, that partnership with parents is the utmost importance. A lot of parents, especially young parents, they're not real confident in how to discipline their children. So the school, I think, needs to take the lead on that, offer some parenting classes, offer advice, let them work with our school counselors, getting advice from them as well. There needs to be really good communication between the classroom teacher, the principal, and the parents if behavior is an issue. Of course, besides that, building relationships with that child is number one in my book. They have to feel connected. They have to feel like they belong. And then they're going to want to please you. They're going to want to do their best for you if they feel that love and caring. So mentors, you know, the relationships with the teachers and everyone in the building. You know, they may have a really good relationship with the cafeteria lady or the bus driver or the custodial staff. Those may be the people that really are able to make a connection with that student and work with them on their behavior. Maybe bringing in some more counselors and psychologists, school psychologists, to work with students so that they don't just see them maybe once a week, but a couple more times during the week as well.
Thank you, Ms. Musser. Derek Gander.
I've been vocal about this, and I'll disagree with David. Sending them home is not the answer. If we have to hire teachers to sit in the classroom for the kids that are causing trouble, I think that's what needs to happen, instead of sending them home to a home that's going to be empty, probably no parent there. And we've already kind of determined that we're having parents that are having issues disciplining their kids. So keeping them in class, in a learning environment, instead of sending them home where they can get on these things, this is a problem. This is why we have a discipline problem. I'm, I think, and we saw this with COVID, what happens to their learning curve when we send them home, even A-day, B-day, we have to keep their butts in the seats. One, the teachers, and this, of course, goes, we need more help with teachers. You know, we need support, but sending them home is not the answer. Getting parents involved, yes, we have to get parents involved. You can't send your child to school and expect the district to teach your child manners and things like that. So it starts at home, but keeping them in class, that's the main thing, and keep them educated.
Thank you. Several of you mentioned phones. According to an Education Week analysis, at least 19 states have laws or policies that ban or restrict students' use of cell phones in schools statewide or recommend local districts enact their own bans or restrictive policies. In fact, Kansas is recommending schools implement a bell-to-bell policy, meaning personal devices are often away during the whole school day. The current policy at Joplin High is that students place phones in a special lockbox at the start of the class and retrieve them afterward. They are to be shut off and not used in the classroom. Phones can be used at lunch and in hallways. Middle school students are not to use phones all day, but can keep them in their pockets or lockers. Do you agree with the current policy? Or do you believe phones should be banned completely all day? And let's begin with Mr. Ross, or David Weaver, sorry.
Yeah, I think the, the whole issue with cell phones is a challenge. Right now, with Joplin High School, we're working our way through the lockers. How does that work? And is it good to take the phones off and put them? Should we require them to leave their phones in the car and not be seen with them in the building? There's a lot of, of concern with parents. How will I reach my child during the day? Well, part of the answer is the same way we did prior to cell phones when they weren't here. So I think that cell phones are deterrent to learning. I think that we need to have policies in place that prohibit that. Whether or not they should have them at lunchtime, you know, when they're on their device, they're not communicating with people, and that's a great time to be with your peers and sit around the tables. So that I think the best thing is to, to limit cell phones, particularly at the younger levels. I think, gosh, if one policy is the middle schools have them, the high school. We're looking at that nationwide. They're trying different things. Maybe the answer is to just not bring them to school, but certainly a difficult issue.
And Ms. Musser.
Yes, I would reiterate what David said. It's definitely a hot topic that, you know, again, needs to be addressed. I, I'm not sure that I can say whether I agree or not with the policy. I haven't read it. I don't currently have any high school students that attend the high school. It would be definitely something that I would look into. Some of my thoughts on that, though, there are pros and cons, of course, for having cell phones in the classroom. Cell phones or technology in general can serve as a valuable learning tool and assist students, particularly if they're working together on group projects, things like that. So there are reasons and ways that it can enhance instructional learning. Students with disabilities, there are several accessibility apps that they can use on their phones such for note, such as for note-taking, you know, things like that, that would be very beneficial to students. Now, having said that, as a teacher, I could see where it could severely affect instructional time, and we need to protect that. So I, you know, I would be in favor of putting cell phones away during instructional time when they're working together on projects, individualized projects. I could see them using them. Some of them need to have them for those apps. That would be beneficial. There's currently legislator, or legislation in the Missouri Legislature. It's tied to a school safety bill where they are wanting school districts to craft a policy that would ban cellphone use. So any conversation we have about it would have to include students, teachers, and parents to make sure that we're getting everyone's input.
All right. Mr. Gander.
So I am for banning them. I, I understand we do have, there are apps and things like that to make things easier, but when a kid is looking at his phone, or her, we're taking away that contact that you have. I've looked at my son's phone, and I don't mean if any of his teachers are watching right now. I don't mean to get him in trouble, but I see the text messages between him and his girlfriend, sending pictures and "I love yous" and all that. It's, it's a distraction. I personally think that we should go back to notebooks if, and things like that. Now, computers and the phones, yes, they do have their place in education, but when it comes down to it, we have, we keep doing the same exact thing, expecting a different result. And it, we've got to change something. So what is the one simplest thing we can change as of right now? That's ban the phones. We talk about phonics and math and reading and writing and things. Kids are, their phones are up against their face, and that's, you know, eyesight. I mean, there's so many bad things about it. I'm for banning them. As a parent, I don't need to talk to my son during the day. He is there to learn. There's no reason, if you have soccer practice or anything like that, you deal with that before you go to school, or you deal with it the night before when they get out of the shower. That's my personal thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Gander. Mr. Ross.
Coming from the generation that was split, I had cell phones that only text the first two years of high school, and then smartphones were introduced by junior and senior year. In general, even texting abilities is a major distraction to the students. I believe that in the school itself, cell phones are best left at home or not in use whatsoever. So a cellphone ban would be something that I would consider on the table. At the end of the day, when it comes down to using technology and helping them, each student in the high school is given a Chromebook. They are able to use that Chromebook, or a laptop, for better use of term, anytime they need to do schoolwork. So they have access to those helpful tools in a computer with no way to communicate. So they have access to those helpful tools in a computer with no way to communicate, no social media, no phone calls coming in or distractions, strictly focused on what they are doing in the classroom. Educating our children is the most premier and important part of the schools. I believe that removing distractions and allowing them to focus on their education is exactly what needs to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Our next question. Joplin Early Childhood is experiencing significant growth with numbers going from 157 in 2022 to 417 in 2025, as presented to the school board in December. And they have a waitlist, apparently. Some Joplin schools have preschool classrooms added to the elementary buildings. Would you support adding preschool classrooms to every elementary? Why or why not? And we begin with Lori Musser.
Absolutely, 100%. I would be in favor of adding early childhood classrooms to every building, more than one, if we could. Early childhood education is what lays the foundation for future learning, and not every child comes from the same kind of background. So early childhood classrooms within the school district levels that playing field for every child, the ones that have had preschool experience and the ones that have not. Not everyone can afford it. So if we could make it affordable and have it in the school district, it would just, 100% yes, absolutely. I'm all in favor for that.
Okay. More time? All right. Mr. Gander.
Yes, 100%. I will agree with Lori all day on this. I think we need it. One, it gets the student familiar with doing this every day, this repetition and the learning. And preschool, the teacher has the opportunity to make the learning fun. I think if we did this, we might see less issues as they got along further, if they see at the end of the day, when I'm done with all my schoolwork, then I get to go play. The benefits for preschool are endless. I don't think there's going to be a person up here that says they're not for pre-K or early childhood development. I, I would 100% whatever it took to hire help for that and, you know, add on to buildings. I don't know, you know, don't know what the logistics are, but yes, I'm 100% for it.
Mr. Ross.
I am for it as well. So at the end of the day, from ages three to five, children develop their core ability of learning, such as like a standard of how they learn. So getting in early and helping them to develop a pattern of recognition of how they are to learn, how they consume knowledge, interaction with other children, I believe it is a fundamental part of who they are in the end. Not everybody has the ability, such as I do, being a business owner, I have a lot of free time, I get to help my daughter learn. I, I mean, she's three years old and already reading, so that is one thing off the list. But not everybody has that time that they're able to spend with their child and focus on their education. This would allow them to all have the ability of educating their children and getting them, as she said, a head start moving forward and get them on path to a better and brighter future.
All right. Mr. Weaver.
Early childhood is an emphasis of the state of Missouri. Most early childhood programs are funded 100% right now, and so we are looking at adding a recent $9 to $10 million in investment onto three schools to add rooms for four-year-olds. We've had our architect look at all of our schools to talk about how can we add rooms for four-year-olds? And so the difference is with this waitlist, I mean, the need is there to go from 157 to 417 students in three years shows that the demand is there for that. So the key is, how do we fund that? Part of it is, is from the funding, but it doesn't always support brick and mortar, and so that gets expensive. We were able to do the projects that we have taken on debt-free, to pay cash, and we've also replaced 30- and 40-year-old furniture with more modern, up-to-date, that meets the needs of students today. And the best thing about early childhood is those that are oftentimes sitting at home watching TV all day are now interacting and learning social skills and behavior skills and all those. So anything we can do to expand opportunities in early childhood education is not only a win for the students and the parents, but for the community, and it pays off big in the long run.
All right. Thank you all. Our next question. The district has developed and approved policies outlining the use and prohibition of AI, or artificial intelligence. As AI options improve in quality, where do you stand on its use? Do you consider it cheating? What strategies would you support for teachers in helping them to recognize AI use? And what do you deem as appropriate outcomes if it's misused? So several questions there, but it's artificial intelligence.
Could you repeat the questions one more time?
I can, I can. So as AI options improve in quality, where do you stand on its use? Now, the district does have a policy of AI, it's on your books. Where do you stand on the use of AI? Do you consider it cheating? What strategies would you support for teachers to help them recognize misuse of AI? And what would you deem as the appropriate outcome if students misuse AI? And we would begin with Derek Gander.
Yes, I think AI is cheating. I think that it has become so easy to put in a few keywords, and I barely can use it, but you can put in a few keywords, and 12 seconds later, you have what sounds to be pretty professional. So now we've taken a student that doesn't have to do anything. He no longer has to research anything. All he has to do is turn his phone on or turn a computer on, and he can type with two fingers and sound like an expert. I think whatever they come up with, because unfortunately, it's going to be AI that determines if AI is being used, technology on top of technology, I am all for putting, if a student's told that you can't use AI to write your report or do all, you know, your schoolwork, I'm all for in-school suspension. There has to be something that is done. You know, a rule is a rule. They're put in place, they need to understand, parents need to understand that that is something we're doing because we want these students to be able to think for themselves, and that's what we're taking away from them with AI. They can't think for themselves. You know, if you allow this, then what's next? Where do you start drawing a line? So I am 100% against AI.
And Mr. Ross.
AI is a tool. It is helpful, however, it has no place in Joplin schools. At the end of the day, our children, it removes their ability to think critically and to construct their own thoughts and thinking process. I believe that our schools are already implementing safeguards on their computers in which the children are using to write their essays and such. So as long as we have the safeguard in place to remove their ability to use AI to construct responses or to do their schoolwork, that is great. There are ways around it. Kids are always going to find loopholes, always going to find ways around things, and we need to stay a step ahead of that. As prompted earlier, he said that using AI to fight AI. I believe that that is handy, and it is a tool, that is a tool for the educators and a tool for the administration to use to try to crack down on the use of AI. We need to allow our kids to grow, allow our kids to think, and become better versions of themselves. I think AI limits that.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. David Weaver.
AI is, is a new phenomenon that's here to stay, and I think the schools need to learn how to embrace it, to help in people to expand their skills when they get in the workforce, but at the same time prevent it from cheating. I serve as the Faculty Senate President-Elect at Pittsburgh State, and we've got a committee of faculty members on this particular issue, and it's not an easy issue to solve. Because if you accuse a student of cheating on AI as a faculty member, you have to be able to prove it. That's very difficult. And I would say that the faculty at Pittsburgh State do not have answers for this particular issue. And I would say for Joplin schools, we're working particularly English teachers in writing essays. It's very difficult to detect, it's always been more difficult for the teacher to prove, and when you're going to accuse a student of academic misconduct, that's a challenge. So there's a lot of issues at play. There's a lot of research in Journal of Higher Education that's addressing this issue, and I think over time, we're going to find solutions. But my view on this is that we need to balance the approach to teach them to use the skills that will make them competitive in industry that is requiring AI skills. The calculators were once considered cheating in math, and yet look at where we are with those today. So it's a balanced approach to the use of it, but still getting students to learn to think for themselves and to construct arguments and to develop those same skill sets they did before computers existed.
All right. And Ms. Musser.
I just want to say ditto to what David said. But he's right, it is here to stay. It's not something that's going to go away. It's just going to become more prevalent. And employers do expect our students to know how to use AI or be familiar with it once they graduate from school, whether they're going on to college or going into a career, going into a job field. They are expected to be familiar with it. So we need to prepare for that. I don't know the perfect answer for students using it to cheat. I know that it's a possibility, I'm sure that it is, used on occasion. Maybe give them more time in class to work on those essays, allow them to collaborate a little bit more with each other. I know that takes away some of that instructional time. If they become more focused on what they're using it on, or what they're accused of using it on, such as essays or writing research papers, then they learn those skills, implementing them in place in the classroom with the teachers there to monitor that. If they get caught using it and it's, they're accused of cheating, then there are already discipline policies in place in all the schools. I would think you would just follow those as well. But anything that we decide to do with AI within the schools, you're going to have to collaborate with parents, teachers, community people, business, business leaders, because it's not going to go away.
All right. Thank you all. All right. We have a bonus question, and since we are ahead of time, we're going to go ahead and, go ahead and ask this one. So President Trump is working to shut down the Federal Department of Education with the intent of shifting funding and responsibilities to the state. Do you think this will have a positive or negative impact on the district, if any? And what would you do as a board member to ensure the district maintains financial supports once provided by the federal government? So if we could start with Mr. Ross. One minute for this one.
Great. Perfect. So whenever the Department of Education at the federal level is being, you know, disallowed, is removing the shackles for the states. The states are looking to do the same, at least here in Missouri, to remove the shackles from our educators and shift the financial finances down to the Board of Education here. So it is imperative that we focus on who we put in place on our local school boards to help dictate our children's future. I mean, at the end of the day, we need people who are fiscally responsible, who are going to be on top of their budgets, taking good care of what is being done for our children's future. That is, that's why we're all here. I mean, at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we do things right.
Okay. All right, Mr. Weaver.
So the Department of Education oversees a lot of functions at the college level. They oversee several, especially the IDEA, the Special Ed Act. And so you can shift it from the Department of Education to Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in the state of Missouri. Unfortunately, that's kind of been a problem here in recent years of massive turnover. It's, it's not been a well-run organization in the past. And so I believe that local control of schools, rather than control in Washington DC or the state level, that local control is the best way that we need to go. As far as finances go, I think that we need the schools to mandate budgets to do what's in the right, in the best interest of their children. I think Joplin schools is in probably some of the best financial situations we've ever been in, clean audits, and Shelley Toft has done a wonderful job for us. And so I think local control of schools and finance and curriculum and evaluation is what needs to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Musser.
Okay. So my opinion is always giving more control locally to meet, to design the education for our students is always a good thing. The bad thing is that we may be losing funding. We're not sure. No one really knows that yet, what, you know, what's going to happen to the funding. We're assuming that it'll be divided equally among the states, but I don't think that's been decided. So I worry about our vulnerable students, the special education students, the students that are receiving Title IX funds, or the schools that are providing Title IX activities for students who are below grade level in reading and writing and math, and getting them that extra instruction that they need to bring them up to grade level. That's funded by the federal dollars. So as long as those are, you know, given to the states and then distributed evenly, you know, unfortunately, we're not at the local level able to make those decisions right now. So we'll have to see what comes of that.
All right. And Mr. Gander.
I, I want local control. I think, and I don't want to use your term unshackled, but I think if you untie these teachers and you allow them to actually go teach and not teach to a test, or not teach to pass something that standardized testing, we need to get away from that. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we don't lose money, we don't lose funding. I am seeing where school lunches will now be paid, Department of Agriculture and things like that, and I think they're working through those things. And if we give them a little bit of time, let's kind of see what they're going to do. Nobody wants to lose any funding. This, you know, when it started $14 billion in 1980, and it, right now, it's $80 billion, I think that's a little fat. If they take some of that money that they're not paying the assistant to the assistant to the assistant and start distributing that within the school districts, maybe we'll actually end up with a little more money where we can educate these teachers, or educate these students, and that allow the teachers to educate. So that's how I feel.
Thank you, Mr. Gander. We now open the microphone to anyone in the audience who'd like to ask a question. Do we have anybody? All right. Well, then we have another one from me. So there we go. All right. What are the biggest challenges facing the district, and what are your ideas for dealing with those issues? So we can start with David Weaver on this one.
I think our biggest challenge is right now, not just for Joplin schools, but for all schools, two that come to mind. One is behavior issues at our primary grades, and as part of that starts in the home, as we've talked about today. But the other is funding. When we look at the funding outlook and when we go to the state conventions and hear reports, state revenues in Missouri is declining. As we said, the governor is currently looking at 300 million short of what's needed to fully fund the budget. And so we're reluctant to put a hard budget out yet until we know what the legislature's going to do. So those will probably be our greatest challenges. My ideas, we've talked about early childhood, we've talked about parents as teachers, and involving our parents and doing more at the earlier grades, and hopefully that pays dividends.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Ms. Musser.
We, I meant, we talked about this a little bit earlier, but teacher retention and the shortages of teachers, you know, they're the number one factor in student achievement. So we have to have plenty of teachers, we have to have quality teachers. And addressing this issue will require some innovative strategies. Again, getting as many people on board as we can to come up with some problem-solving techniques for that issue. The high-quality work environment, again, that school culture is so important, and I think that's something that we really need to focus on, and I think we do a good job of that in the Joplin School District with the principals and the assistant principals and the teachers. They should all be working together to make sure that that, that culture is established and headed in the right direction for kids.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Musser. Derek Gander.
One thing we're kind of forgetting about is support staff. So we have teacher retention, but what about staff? Bus drivers, the cooks and things like that. You know, and I think it was mentioned earlier that sometimes a child may have, have a rapport with someone else other than the teacher. A school bus driver is the first person of the district that a student sees at the beginning of their day and at the end of their day. We do have behavioral issues, and I think those things need to be addressed. How? I don't know. It starts at home, but how can you go tell a parent, you're going to have to do this? That's, I don't know. And funding, you know, I hope the funding stays positive. If not, we're going to have to tighten our belts, period. There's no other way. It's either educate our students, or we can cry about losing funding. You know, if that's taken off the fat at the top, and I don't know, but it's something that's going to have to be addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Gander. Mr. Ross.
Most of the restrictions on our local schools are really up in the air due to our current legislation up in Jefferson City. So we'll see how things pan out up there this session. However, right now here locally, we have a funding issue, whether it is fiscal responsibility or not enough revenue coming in, is yet to be seen. I would like to take a peek at the books, but I'll just leave it at that. When it comes down to it, the ads that go out every year, as stated by Derek, bus drivers, that is something we have the hardest time retaining, hardest time getting around. We need our students to actually get to school so we can teach them, and to have good and safe transportation is also paramount. Within the classrooms, discipline, that is something we've talked about endlessly tonight, and I hope that we're able to resolve that, and I'd love the vote on April 8th to do that.
All right. So another question. Do we have any from the audience here? Okay. All right, we'll move on to another question. All the things you talked about often take funding. You mentioned that there are federal fund, we do have a question. We did a question. Come on up. We have a question from our crowd. We'll bring him up here.
I'm Judd Fisher, and I was just, there was a comment made about teaching to the test, not liking standardized testing, but I would like to get each of your opinions on what criteria would you use, then, to determine a success, what makes a successful school system? When you graduate the students from high school, what criteria do you use? And if you don't have standardized testing to determine what education levels they're achieving?
So right now, we see the standardized testing that we do have, and the students aren't, I mean, we're preaching to pass that test, pass that test, but these are minimal guidelines. I think if we took the handcuffs off the teachers and actually let them teach, they would end up quite a bit closer to like some of us when we went to school and the things that we knew and what we do when we walked across and picked up our diploma. I mean, I don't, I don't know who comes up with the testing and how, but there's got to be something better. And I said it earlier, we keep doing the same exact thing, expecting a different result, and that's, the result is not positive.
All right. Mr. Ross, would you ask the question?
When I was in school, we didn't have as many standardized tests being issued to the schools as they do currently. And I believe that that feeds into the thought of teaching to the test. I believe maybe we should dial it back a little bit. MAPs testing has been very beneficial, I believe, in the past as far as a gauge as to where our kids stand in the education system. Accreditation tests, I mean, that is what it is at the end of the day. That is a good measure. But whenever it comes down to one standardized test, instead of trying to focus on what we're teaching in the classroom, what our children need to learn in order to develop a better critical thinking ability, better life, I mean, we're trying to create the future, and whenever we're hampering them even more than we were hampered, that's not looking very good, it's not looking very bright.
Mr. Weaver?
The challenge with the MAP testing is that schools are in the process of, you're going to take those in the next couple of weeks, and the students will be done, they'll submit those, and then we get the results in November. It's very hard to make adjustments when you have to wait seven months for your testing data. The other thing is, it's one test at one point in time with the results seven months later. I would be an advocate for monthly tests or smaller-level tests that measure certain areas of proficiency. So maybe we test once a month. In Joplin schools, we're doing a little bit of that. It's not just MAP testing once, but it's other reading tests for the lower levels, it's skill tests to see how are we doing incrementally throughout the year, where we have feedback within a day or within hours instead of waiting for seven months. I think the other is business and local industry. How are they doing? Are our students coming up prepared when they enter the workforce? And that would be a great judge of how we're doing, is our industry and business owners.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Lori Musser?
So data is very important, and we get that from doing assessment. It's what guides our instruction, it's what guides what takes place in the school every single day. But standardized testing, I agree, it's, you know, one point in time, and it gives you some information, but not all the information. When I worked in the school district, we gave the MAP test, and we, you know, really got kids hyped up for that, and the results of that was so important. But it was, it was very stressful for not only the teachers, but the students, high anxiety. We even had instructions in the instruction manual that we had to read word-for-word on what to do if a student threw up on their exam booklet. I mean, it was actually in the instructions. That's how high-stress it was. So they have their place. I'm not going to rely on standardized testing to tell me how my children are doing or the children in my classroom. It needs to be informal assessment on a daily basis.
Ms. Musser? Any other questions from the crowd? Well, last one more for you all. You all, again, talked about things that need to be improved, maybe adding classrooms, not necessarily brick and mortar covered by federal monies. So would you consider raising property taxes if you were, if it was a suggestion to pay for instruction to add on to that early childhood? Or do you consider possibly our system is top-heavy and eliminating higher-level positions to make more room for teachers and the other spending? Let's begin with Mr. Ross.
I don't believe that the first wave should ever be more taxes. I think we need to look at every possible venture and avenue. As far as top-heavy, yes, I believe that there are some situations in which we are within the school district, and it would be great to look into that and try to save the taxpayers' money so we can allocate funds that are more beneficial for our students and the future, such as early childhood development and education. Whenever it comes down to it, I don't support raising taxes. I don't believe that that should ever be considered the one-size-fits-all solution to anything. I really don't think that anyone in this room would be on board with more taxes over trying to look over costs and trying to save money. So at the end of the day, no new taxes.
Okay. David Weaver?
I think a tax increase is a last resort. I think you try to increase teacher satisfaction, retention, to get people to want to enter the profession. But I do think that the quality of your schools impacts the value of your house. And so when it comes to the point where we can no longer attract teachers, if salary is the one thing, then the community needs to be involved. Before we issue a tax question, it really needs to come from the community, lots of listening to people, lots of putting out there, and always looking for, is there anything else we can do before asking for that? I don't believe in new taxes. I don't believe we've asked for new taxes. We've lived within our budget. We're going to pass a balanced budget again this year, and we're excited about that. We are doing all of these additions at no debt, no taxes, and we're strong financially, and we're only going to look at taxes as a very last resort.
All right. Ms. Musser?
Absolutely. You know, I don't know what's going to happen in the future, none of us do. Will we need a tax increase in the future? I can't say for sure. But I can guarantee that I'll make any decision or put support behind something like that if I'm convinced that it's what's right for our students. If I, you know, have been able to speak to people that can tell me why we need it or, you know, what it's going to go for, it helps me to make that informed decision to do what's right for everyone. But also just to, you know, I'm not going, if I don't know something, I'm going to go ask someone, I'm going to find out the information, I'm going to do my own research. I'm not just going to jump on the bandwagon and say, let's raise taxes. The school district currently is in exceptional financial shape. You know, they're not, they're not lacking funds. They have worked very hard to save a lot of money, and that's what we're seeing now as far as renovations on several buildings in the district. They have worked hard to save that money, and that's what they're using.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gander?
I'd like to say, my previous tenure on the board, I was part of helping fix some of the financial issues from the previous administration, and that was instrumental in getting us to good reserves and things. The second thing I'd like to say is no new taxes. Single parents can't afford, I don't want to afford new taxes. I think Joplin does a very, very, very good job at maintaining the buildings that we have. You can go into McKinley, you can go into Stapleton, I believe those are a couple of our older buildings. They are maintained well. I don't think buildings do not bring a teacher. If we're going to spend that money, other than early childhood development, teacher pay is what's going to bring teachers. They're not going to walk in and go, well, I'm not taking that job because that building's not nice. That's not what happens. So no new taxes. I, no, I'm not a fan of taxes.
All right. Thank you all for answering those questions. That does conclude our forum. If you tuned in late, to the viewers out there, don't worry, KGCSTV will rebroadcast the forum recording Tuesday, April 1st at 7:00 p.m., Wednesday, April 2nd at 8:00 p.m., and again Thursday, April 3rd at 6:00 p.m. Don't forget to exercise your right to vote April 8th. The polls are open from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And again, we thank you all for watching. I'm your host, Lisa Olagus. Thank you to our candidates for spending time with us tonight and sharing your ideas and opinions. Thanks to our guests here at City Hall, and thank you all for watching.